In the print. That's what I wanna make sure.
Student outcome won't change until adult behavior changes.
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure that is included in the statement.
Alright, let's move on. Can we go to ethics for school board members?
So, can we just put, can we put the, all that governance stuff, Lone Star Governance right after we, we believe stuff?
You should have something to remember.
Okay.
Ethics for school board members, uh, those are the ones that are in policy now, and there's no changes recommended to that. Did anybody have, everybody have a chance to read those?
I did.
Alright, let's go now to board operating procedures, actually, on page five. And I know that as we go through this, we have also received the trigger getting in December, the latest, uh, uh, board update one oh nine, that was from this last legislative session, that does have some changes in it that will be in policy as well for legal and local that had to do with some of the governance. I, I, and we've included those in here. So, uh, let's look at the first paragraph. Where we have the, uh, the same paragraph that we have in the V O one, but we're saying replace the more applicable language from Lone Star Governance. Now again, I mean, we can leave that and we can put some more language in Lone Star Governance. If you're bored, then I said, can you read that for a moment and see how you feel about it?
That's A one, right?
And she's just talking about that first paragraph.
That first paragraph.
Oh, oh.
The people kind of introduced.
And you've backed it for school.
Okay.
That team of eight language that has kind of been your cornerstone forever as a board superintendent team. And again, it may be something where you don't wanna replace it, but you wanna add to it instead, but.
Yes, add the Lone Star Governance line.
But there are, there are a lot, there's a lot of good stuff in the Lone Star Governance manual that talks more about, you know, what your role is and what your focus is, you know, all that kinda stuff that probably is going to drive the edits more of your board operating procedures than language that's there.
Do you wanna just add that or?
Just, just add.
Add it to this.
And that may be a perfect place to put adult behaviors until adult behaviors change and student outcomes, huh? Student outcome chan, yeah, student outcomes won't change until adult behaviors, that might be a good part left to put that in.
Anybody else plan?
For the first paragraph, I'm fine.
Alright, then we go to the MacDosh As you board trustees adopts these guidelines. And the num, the first one's developing the board meeting agenda. So, we, uh, Kelly has marked through these items and now it's reflecting the newest V E legal and local that's coming out with one oh nine.
These aren't recommendations.
No, they're not.
This is just what your existing policy says. And so, this is how, quote unquote, off your board operating procedures were from your local policy language. And so, that's why I felt like, let's do it in track changes mode so that you can see.
What's the difference?
And decide for yourself which, which one you like, because you may decide you wanna change policy at some point.
I s, I circled item, on item A three, second to last word, it says near future. I'm uncomfortable with near future, I would like to define near.
Do you want more?
I, I had exactly the same thing, and the line that says, what do you mean exactly, next board meeting, or what?
Let's define what that is.
And just for historical perspective, when was the last time A one, two or three were addressed or changed by a board or do we know?
Uh, December of fifteen was the, the last version. And before that was two thousand eleven.
I also have a question, it says, my, my, uh, so-called comment was, what appropriate time means? Parenthesis, next board meeting, for example. Uh, at times, there are some information that we request and public needs to know the answers as well. So, I don't know if I make any sense.
You do. Uh, what I've seen in this policy is pretty much that same way, uh, because it gives the board president the time to, um, if you, if you put, if you say it will be on the next meeting and you define it that way, there's times that it can't be on the next meeting because of, it depends on what the topic is. It could be more than what we can deal with that night, or we don't have the information, or whatever. So, if you wanted to find it some other way, but it, it, you say.
You could also say, I think, next regularly scheduled meeting, because you may have a special meeting that.
I think that would sound better.
Next regularly scheduled meeting.
Makes a lot more sense than just in the near future.
That's, that's what I put next.
So, before the next regularly scheduled.
Yes.
Appropriate time in.
Why, Mr. S, Mr. Gray, you had a objection to that, or?
I, I, I just, I'm just, you're, you're making these rules not just for this board, for, but for, for, for potentially future boards and, uh, having been, having been board president before, it, uh, you got, you gotta have some flexibility. Now, you could have a, I could foresee in the future, you may have a role. Board member wanted to do all kinds of stuff out there and need, need a little bit of flexibility from the board president.
I disagree with that standpoint, I've heard more than once, Steve, you say, it says, I have to put it on the agenda, but it doesn't say when I have to put it on the agenda. And I think that is an erroneous approach. Uh, we should govern openly, and if there's a topic that needs to be discussed, let's, let's discuss it openly. And the majority of the board will, will vote accordingly.
I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna make my stand on this, I just, that was my opinion.
I have four scheduled deliberation, no later than the next regularly scheduled board meeting. And then, if it's, um, you know, certainly if it's abused, you can always go back and you can require that two board members have to request something for it to be on the next. You know, you can always tweak it, if you feel like it's, you know, not working to your end.
I think if after appropriate time, you put during or before the next regular scheduled board meeting, it gives you flexibility to do a special meeting also. So, it would read, schedule for deliberation at an appropriate time, during or before the next regularly scheduled board meeting. So, that gives the flexibility to, it might not even be put off till the next regular board meeting, it might be something that's important to take up or special.
You good with that?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, items eligible for closed meeting at V E C legal and local. So, again, uh, uh, most of the items were struck out because it did not match the, the policies. And so, uh, you'll read that, take the time to read that.
Number six is because it gives you an affirmative defense. Um, and so, if there's ever a question, I can shoot you an email in a nanosecond that just will protect you in, in that way. Even if I'm wrong, if you act in good faith, based on the advice of legal counsel, that you can talk about something in closed session. Um, it's a firm defense to me in a criminal prosecution, so that's why number six is important, is that, um.
Anything on number one, posted agenda? Number two? Alright, go to C then, on page six, consent agenda items.
On this one, I, I marked, um, on item five, uh, the last sentence, it says, this will not occur without prior, without providing prior notice to the superintendent sufficient that the superintendent can have staff and/or the information necessary to address the trustee's question. While I agree with that, again, I don't think that we've defined what sufficient is.
Okay, let me think about that.
Yeah, take it, take this back to the goal, the goal, uh, progress measure, this is where this language came from. You guys did spend some time debating that.
Yeah, I mean, what is, what is sufficient, is sufficient, I, you know, twenty minutes? Is sufficient?
Not twenty minutes.
Well, that's, 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 that's my exact point, is, is I think we need to, we need to define that.
So, let's, let, uh, you know.
I agree with that.
If it, if it's a, what'd you say?
It may depend on what's being requested.
I think it depends on the research that you have to do to get the data.
Yeah, and, and definitely, sometimes when y'all request something, I can go pull it from my computer in ten minutes. And the other ones, if it's requiring, um, several departments to come together and us to research the project, then it could take days. So, it just depends, if we, if we can practice in a way that it's flexible to allow for that, I mean.
You, you can write it in such a way that it gives you the discretion.
And I was certain to communicate that with y'all.
To determine, to determine whether or not you had sufficient time, whether it's five minutes or five hours. You could change the language in there that says prior notice to the superintendent sufficient that in the superintendents of belief, it can be, it can be addressed at this meeting. You could do it like that and, and then.
Well, and at what point was it, is it come that maybe something needs to be pulled and held to the next meeting as well, you know?
Sure.
Um, but it's just defining that, that's very broad, I don't, I think you could argue what sufficient is.
So, if we can write it another way to allow that flexibility.
So, Pam, did you have a recommendation?
No, I just felt like it needed to be defined.
For me not to, not, for me not to get asked for a report that's gonna take days of research to be done in twenty-four hours. And if I can only have upwind communication, which I do with y'all, and say, and I have said, just, just in a way, we can get this done at this time, but we can get it done by, in four weeks, or something like that, because I know what it's gonna take in the staff.
How could you want it to where?
Number three.
Whatever question we ask you, you, you have time to, to be able to answer the question in public, in a public meeting.
Right.
Without having to say, I can't answer that question.
You, you add the language that says, this will not occur without providing prior notice to the superintendent sufficient that the superintendent believes the superintendent can have staff and her information at the meeting necessary to address the trustee's question. It's a little duplicative, but you can phrase it in such a way and leave the discretion. So, if you approach her thirty minutes before the meeting and she can get a quick answer and deal with it, fine. If it's five hours, fine, but if she says, that's a ten hour project, you can't do it in five hours, then, fine, but it's, you're leaving it to the head person's discretion. If that's okay with you.
I mean, I know, in some cases, I've had to say, you know, we don't have right now the systems in place to, to pull that, so it's gonna take time to go through folders or whatever like that, and I know that, so I can sort of like give you the reasons why. Most of what we've been able to get, it's just, there's been some that have taken time, and it also depends on the time of year. If, you know, if you're o, opening school, and you're trying to get first paychecks out and everything, and it requires G W eleven, and then you, I get a huge report, I can't stop the staff from doing the pay, paychecks, I can put that off to later, yeah, that type of thing. I just need to be able to, um, you look, look at any hard ju, uh, uh.
I was just thinking, usually when we put something on the consent, if we, if we want it on the agenda, we already have
The information.
The information ready to give.
This is, if they request it and we're not ready for it yet.
Okay, so it's not like, it's not normal consent, like, pull.
Because if we're putting it on the agenda, we, we know, we gotta do this ready.
Gotcha.
It's, it's been planned out over time. It's, if you need information for something, and I just need to be able to look at the scope of it.
Well, I think this went back to our discussion at that workshop, did, am I wrong, that where you were wanting no item to be pulled from consent unless you had received notice by, say, the Monday before the meeting, or three days prior to the meeting, or something like that, wasn't it?
Yeah, this is consent.
Yeah, it, it was.
This is consent.
Right, it was, it was definitely, it was pulling it from the consent.
Okay, that's right.
This is consent.
And whatever was in the board packet was insufficient to answer the trustee's question.
That's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And so, the trustee pulls it because he or she wants more information, but it's different, it doesn't have that person there or that document there.
And I don't have the time.
Right, this is consent.
So, that's the scenario that's required to.
And I'm giving sufficient time to you, yeah, for what?
You know, and is, and maybe that's twenty-four hours, that, that there's an intent, an intent to pull.
To at least let me know.
I, I, I'm nervous about saying that it cannot be pulled, because you never know when something maybe need to be pulled for another reason, but, you know.
We've done that, too.
Yes, the way, the way it's written, it's, the way it's written, as it is right now, it's kinda your discretion as to what sufficient is.
That's my point. It needs to be defined.
That, well, that should, that's probably the way it should be.
Well, depends, I mean, I think any, again, I go back to, you know, you could, she may not always be in that seat, this is, this is an open-ended document, and you may have somebody there that, you know, I didn't have sufficient time to respond to that, so we won't discuss it.
Say, use it, we put it on the next meeting and take care of it.
Well, I'm. Give me sufficient time to, though, I'm just, no.
I'm thinking now that if you're asking for a prior notice, that means before the board meeting, I'm thinking, so.
Let's just define what that is.
Three.
I mean, like, if, if I have twenty-four hours.
Let's say three days.
Twenty-four, that's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking for, is to define what it is, twenty-four hours prior.
Yeah, put three days.
If, if you know that you are gonna pull something and you need more information, and you let me know in twenty-four hours, I, I'm not saying I can get it done in twenty-four hours, I'm saying you give me.
Well, that's the problem, you, you don't wanna put something in writing that says you can't do, that you can't deliver.
That you can't do, right. How many days in advance?
Well, she always has the option to pull it, pull it for the next week.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm.
Seven days, so three days in advance. Three days in advance, if they pull it, give you prior notice, three days in advance, then you can have it. Cause our agenda's out, what, seven days?
Yep.
Yes, but that's not.
Who'd do it, who'd make it all the way through the agenda, you know?
The thing what I'm asking.
What she's saying is she can pull it on her own anyway, so that if you give her twenty-four hours notice, and she knows that she can't get it done in twenty-four hours,
I need to let y'all know.
She can just pull it and inform us that she pulled it.
Because if it's a big enough, and we've had some that, you know, requires a lot more investigation. If I can't get that done in twenty-four hours, I need to pull it and let, or y'all pull it, and if you're asking me more questions about it, and give me time, I can say, I can have that to you in twenty-four hours. Or it's active on the next agenda, because I don't have the manpower right now to do it. That's all I'm, I am just wanting that.
Well, I, I.
And Sandra, it's usually if somebody asking, they already have the information, maybe there's some extra information they need.
Yeah, that's right.
And so, then they have it a week in advance, so surely within a few days of getting that information, they'd say, I'd like to know X, Y and Z prior.
And of course, anytime you see it, the earlier you do it, the better, you know, chance that I can.
If you're happy with twenty-four hours, I'm happy with it.
Because if I have that flexibility, just to come back and say, hey, um, I know what you want, but I can't do it in that time period, I'll put it on the next one and get that to you.
That's good.
Okay?
Make sure that's spelled out in there.
I got it.
Alright, so then we go down to D's all done, um, y'all, certainly, if you wanna read the special note that you just made.
E is just brand new, because the, the E is just, you guys need more.
Yep. Yeah.
Because I'm telling you, you probably need to.
Yeah, well, and how do we handle, um,
Because you don't want it in policy.
Yeah, situations where, and we had this come up recently, that we literally received the information at the meeting. And, and it's hard to ask questions about that information then, because, well, in that case, Sandra had not even had an opportunity to review the, the material. So, it would not be fair of me to sit there and begin to question you on a document that you also did not receive prior to the meeting. So, how do we address that issue?
And then, let me give you another one, like scores that we have this year, because our board meetings don't always run coincidentally with the scores, we have to wait until literally the week that we're gonna have the board meeting, which you've already received the packet, to pull the scores together, so you can't see them in ahead of time. I mean, there's just no way we can, the way that the benchmarks are aligned, so, you know, and what you don't wanna do is put them out too far, because if you do that, then we're making the decision too late.
But the wording is, it's, you shall make every effort.
That's, yeah, that's, that's all you have.
Correct, and, and, and that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, how do you deal with those issues where, because we did not get the information in time? We are not able to really have discourse the way a board should on that item, because ha, that, it's not, it's not fair of me as a board member, if you've not had that opportunity either. So, how do we address that? That's just a question I'm asking.
Question, like we did last time.
Well, like it is, it is a timeline.
Well, but they, but like the, but we, that, right, and we're on the timeline.
In that case, we had, we had a time deadline that was sensitive in that particular case, and.
But how often does that come up? Quite frequently, we're told, we have to vote on this at this meeting.
Because of the.
Because of the timeline.
And like I said, the scores are just the way they, I mean, I can't get them to the, did I say? But yeah, we need, but we need to look at them at that board meeting to stay on track, you know? If I put that scores off to another board meeting, which it, it won't interfere with.
Are you allowed to supplement your board materials prior to the meeting without violating any policies?
They make a special meeting after that.
That's for nothing to do with the.
So, so then, if, if you get them, get them done on the afternoon before, file them off.
I'm good.
Whatever you can do, just like in, in the case Pam was saying, I mean, at some point in time, earlier than the day, the day before, you got that book.
Except for we did, she walked in with it.
She walked in with it, okay, bad, bad example, so, yeah, I guess you could, yeah, so that's true, but well, then you can't, everybody can't.
You know, the administration do the best it can, knowing the board's desire to have the information that Pam mentioned, so we can live it over.
And we watch all that happen.
And that's, you know, in those situations, they suggest, you know.
So, like Sammy.
She did walk in with those books in her hand.
Yeah, she did.
So, like Sammy, you were the scorer, so when we get Jolene here to help with that, if we even get them the day of, or the day before, if we shoot them on to you, at least you might be, okay?
Yeah, with it.
Because I don't wanna put those off. And normally, on the audit, I get a PDF before I did it.
Right.
So.
So, she give a discount on that deal.
We don't like to get out.
But normally, but normally, I do in the past of that.
Because it does put us in the bind, and then it puts y'all in a bind, because, um, now, now.
And as a result, some issues that could be very important issues go undiscussed, because.
Now, the discuss, like the scores, um, we examine those ahead of time, as soon as we get them, we examine them. But, uh, to send them to y'all, uh, it's just like, and so.
Just pulling the cumulative, because they, the tests occur over a range of times, so second grade might not be with third, fourth, it's just pulling them all together, but we'll, we'll get them to you as soon as we can.
Y'all can take that and take the summary, and then we'll discuss it all the time, and try to avoid it, whatever process, whenever the company does that, we're just gonna worry. So, if something else, uh, let's put it like this, if we, if there's an item that's gonna be put on and we can put it off, because we don't have the information, and it's not under timeline, we won't put it on there until you have time, we're gonna show that.
And go the ver, vice versa direction, when you know there's a timeline, make sure to allow, you know, if it's a, I, I, I can think of different purchasing things and stuff like that, and they're like, no, we have to do it now, we have to do it now, well, why didn't you bring it to us a month ago, you know? So.
And you have to tell it more soon, because there's some, it's, it's.
Oh, she's talking about purchasing things, business.
Right.
Yeah, the only thing I can think of is like, if there's an emergency repair or something, and they have to give it.
Yeah, that's a different, emergency repair is completely different. We used to get several of those under max.
Alright, well, we'll do what we can on that, and we'll see how it goes, okay? But, um, but we'll get it to you as fast as we can. Uh, so, what are we saying here? The administration shall make every effort to make meeting materials available to each board member at least six calendar days before each regular meeting, including the final agenda and any documents or materials related to items on the agenda.
And there's no language at all about special meetings in your policy, so that's why I put lines.
So, do you wanna say anything there?
Wait, where are you? Oh, you're up at D, okay.
E.
E, E, E.
No, you're, E is preparation and delivery of the board packet, you just said something about special meetings? Oh, delivery of the board packet for special meetings.
Yeah.
Add special in the first sentence, too, special and regular meeting.
Special meetings.
Say the same sentence.
Make the same thing.
But do you know about special meetings?
Special meetings are called meetings, you may not have six days.
Yeah, you only have to do three, right?
You only have to do three.
Maybe do number two, the same, but make it at least three.
Might be included in every effort?
Every effort is in the wording.
Um, for the three days in the special.
Every effort, the administration shall make every effort.
Or just, yeah.
At least three days.
Now, I will tell you, now, I think Gray and I would agree on this one, that is, if it's a special called meeting, that's for a reason we know, and we're gonna most likely have those materials ready. I mean, that's one that we're, we're calling it because of a purpose that we have in hand. So, we wouldn't be, we shouldn't call the meeting until we have the stuff, it really.
And it might also be something that if there's gonna be board action taken, sometimes a special meeting is just for information, items, things like that, if there's gonna be action taken by the board, they, they need to have their information ahead of time to make a good decision, so, and that could also layer into that.
Is that alright with y'all? Cancellation of meetings.
I think, as we all know, I, I feel like it should require more than one person to change your, the meeting date of a regular meeting at least.
I know that Holly is, um, usually calling everybody to see when is convenient, or when the dates can match up. And I, and I also feel the same way, because I think when one, one person makes a decision, then we're held, I'm pretty flexible when it comes to coming to meetings, and I try to be at the meetings when possible, but there may be a time when I need to be at the meeting, and I may not be able to be there because of circumstance, and I like to be able to say, well, you know, I can't make it, and it's not just for me, but, I mean, all of us go through that as board members. Again, I think the commitment of us being board members, we come to the meetings when we're supposed to be here for the meetings, but those circumstances do arise, and, and we have to figure some way that it can be at least together. And I don't know how we would word that, because it's not gonna be an easy thing to do, you know?
And I don't know what, if there's a, yeah, what other boards do would be interesting as well.
And that would just, I guess, the samples.
Proper notice is not defined again, so that might be an issue someone would argue about, so you can give me proper notice.
I'm not sure I'm necessarily for changing it, because I don't think that decision should be made without the consensus of at least the majority. I know the time that I changed the meeting, I had a majority consensus, and so, I think in good taste, you know, nobody's gonna change a meeting without at least having the majority present. May not get everybody, because there's gonna come a time when, you know, we're not gonna always, always be here. I mean, there're gonna be meetings, we're not, we just can't make it.
Can we, can we just put a number two in here, that changes should be rare?
Define rare.
This should make very few changes, uh, just put it something in there.
Well, I mean, we got, we gotta change the next month's meeting.
But we also have meetings where it's critical that all board members are present, and, and if we keep changing the meetings, and then we set it, and then if somebody knows, like I know, that I have this meeting on a certain date, I'm not gonna try to change it to make it convenient, if I have something else to do, I'm gonna be here, because I know it's gonna be a critical meeting to be at. And so, I mean, I, that's the way I look at it, I just, you know, if, if, if we have a commitment, we have to have a commitment to be here when we need to make some serious decisions or some important decisions. Now, these informational meetings that we have and stuff, I think they're a little bit more flexible in terms of, if I can't be here because something's got scheduled, be, that's a little bit different. But I think in the critical part of our meetings, when we make decisions that are critical, I, I don't, I just think we need that commitment.
And from my experience, and how you talk about it, regular meetings are set at a location and times, and for a reason, that's for the community and everybody to know.
Right.
So, you wouldn't change that unless it's a little, I mean, an emergency, some situation.
Absolutely.
And, and define absolute emergency, because that's what we get into in that situation.
Well, I think the first part of that sentence kinda takes all this out of play, because we're looking at it right now, it sounds like we're saying one person to decide when to do it, but it says,
Right.
For the convenience of board members, so if, if.
It's not really.
Together has an issue with it, then he can.
That's my point. Gray, we had a, we had a, a, a regular meeting that was moved during the business day, when people, when, when the, most of the general public are at work and couldn't attend, and that was done at the discretion of one person, and when, and when asked about that, they quote back to this policy saying that one person has the authority to do that.
But that one person contacted every board member.
But it wasn't a unanimous consensus, because I don't think.
Well, I mean, it was a majority.
Okay.
That one, and I mean, I wanna be fair, it wasn't a decision I made without contacting and talking with other board members. And it was for the convenience of not just me, but even other board members, that had it not been moved, would not have been able to attend that particular meeting.
And, and I don't have a problem if that's what we're going to do, but I still, I think I have to echo what Pam says, that if we're gonna change a board meeting plan, the public can't be there, that's not a good thing. I'm not in agreement with that, because we have to allow the public to be here for those meetings. I'm not in agreement with that, because we have to allow the public to be here for those meetings whenever we have. And that was, I mean, that, we, I got a lot of phone calls regarding that the public was like, again, transparency, to me, that we don't have a board meeting plan, other people can't attend from the public, and that's just, that's my feeling, and, and I think that's, that's critical in terms of transparency to the community, so that's where I, that's my, that's my opinion, and that's what I think.
Thank you.
Most times I've seen the policies that I've seen are written like this.
Of everyone I look at is, is the same, so it's got to be, it's been seen or like.
Right.
Um.
I, I just don't think it should be changed.
I mean, that, that's the way I've seen, I haven't seen it went any other way. But I think it comes down to what's the real reason for the, the, uh, the meeting we change, and it needs to be very important to change a real meeting, at the same time that proper notice is given and in time for people to move.
Well, how often has it even occurred?
It's happened once.
That's what I'm, I can't remember another time, but it hasn't occurred, hasn't occurred at all.
Does people schedule out for those?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think the language is appropriate, and then, like Russell said, and others, it's happened once, and the board understands that, uh, the understanding is that the board is informed, so we are, but then also for the public to have the opportunity.
I mean, it's like tonight, we're going to change some regular meeting dates, because of the calendar, the way the holidays start.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just.
Will you move on?
Okay. B E D legal and local, and that's the two, public participation during board meetings. A school board meeting is a meeting of board trustees held in public, not a meeting of the public. And that's where we get, you know, there is confusion sometimes, I mean, it is, it's for the public to see that it is a meeting of the board. And so, um, hence the audit's participation at the board meeting is limited to the public comment portion of the meeting designated for that public. And so, these are some of the things that were put in according to B E D legal and local. At regular meetings, the board shall allot thirty minutes to your persons who desire to make comments to the board, no presentation shall exceed thirty minutes, we do that now. Delegations of more than five minute persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the board, we, we do that now.
This is all your policy.
Yeah.
This is, this is what your policy says, so this is your opportunity to review and decide if you like what you have, but your board operating procedures did not have all of this, and so that's why I included it.
Okay.
Um, in looking at, you know, my observations is what some other districts do in public comment, um, there, sometimes you'll see a lot more specificity on signing up, um, and again, I think that goes towards the same concept of having the administration in, aware and prepared to address whatever issues are brought forward, so a lot of times you'll see a certain sign during the day that they have to register or sign up with board services. You know, it might be, you know, four thirty on the day of the board meeting, which in our circumstance would be, you know, thirty minutes. And that could be electronically, you know, you could create it such that somebody could sign up with their topic, and that just gives the administration a little bit of a heads up as well, because as we've talked about before, it's not a violation of the act for the administration to comment back and respond factually to information, um, or even for board members to respond by, you know, providing, um, reference to a policy, so if you have a little bit of a heads up. So, that's one thing that I've seen, um, different, where you actually have a required time to do it.
We just can't have, start a discussion of the.
If it's not on the agenda. In some districts will have, um, two, two different types of public comment, sometimes they'll have a comment section that deals just with agenda items, and that will be at the beginning of a board meeting, because you want to hear what the community has to say about your agenda items. And then if they're, and then they would have a follow-up public comment at the conclusion of the meeting that would be on non-agenda items that would be pertinent for considering placing on a future agenda item, I've seen that, um.
And one of the things I, you know, I'm just going to bring out here while she's talking about that.
E is, is very common, you know, you guys.
Yeah. When, if, if we're doing, if we're continuing this process the way it is, I think we've got to control some situations, and I'm just, this is from me viewing what I'm seeing compared to some other situations in districts. Since it is a, a meeting of the board, and we're going to keep it in control, there are times when if people get up and start speaking to the audience and walking around and speaking to the audience, that's not really supposed to happen. Like it says in when addressing the board, a person should stand at the podium and face the board, because they're, they're addressing y'all, not, not the audience out here. And so, that, those kinds of things need to be kept in control, and I'm just telling you, because if you watch some of them, um, videos and stuff, and then experienced some that have gotten out of hand, it's because you allow something like that to start happening, which angers people, and then you get some crazy stuff going on.
I did find some, some more, um, direct language in some of the policies that addressed complaints against employees that basically just said, you don't get to talk about any, any issue of concern about an employee period. Um, you have to utilize that the complaint process and the, the public comment section out in front of, you know, the world, regardless of whether you use a person's system or not, it's not the appropriate place to say mean things and to criticize employees or officers, period. Um, so, that might be something you want to consider.
Well, and it's, it, it seems like something is read at the beginning of our policy, that maybe the board president or somebody of discretion would do that, I'm not sure it's ever been exercised,
Exactly.
but to, supposed to refer people to proper complaint procedure policy if they're there to complain about.
Right. Employee, employee or.
Employees or administration, or for that matter, really even probably board members is appropriate. You're allowing the public to blindside folks, and you're keeping people on the board from factually being able to correct it when it's wrong.
Yes, because they're not aware.
And so, because you're not aware of it, so you can, you can up the time on the, on the subject and the sign up electronically or otherwise, which helps give some notice, and you can have a procedure to enforce folks who are going outside of the true complaint process to complain about something that needs probably some administration factual investigation to respond, so that it can be responded to appropriately at the appropriate occasion.
I think this is the language you're talking about, the board will not entertain complaints or criticisms about individual employees or other complaints during this portion of the meeting, and if the presiding officer determines their presentation during this portion of the meeting as a complaint about an individual school employee or any other matter, he will respectfully ask the person to stop speaking and to use the board's adopted policies and procedures for bringing complaints or concerns to the board as a matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. So, maybe this or language similar to what Reverend Urban reads, if it's part of your board operating procedures, he would feel more comfortable jumping in and saying, well, these are our procedures, and, and you have the discretion to say this is a complaint.
Mrs. Smith, I, I do want to remind you that this is our policy as a board, and if the board chooses, we can take completely the public comment section out of the policy, if that's what the board likes.
I'm, I don't think I'm in favor of that, I, I, my question would be is, okay, if people have to sign up to make a comment, a public comment, when they sign up, is there a part on that form that says what they're going to be speaking about?
Yes.
Okay, so then, if they're doing it right before the board, seems to me like if there's going to be an issue about what might be commented on, maybe we need to push the time back for when they come and they sign up to be able to do the public comment, so that then in turn, if there's a situation that needs to be discussed, for example, on an employee complaint or whatever, then they can do that without having to bring it to public comment.
I don't think they give that specificity, because they just say in program or, you know.
They don't? Okay.
It doesn't always identify if you're going to have a type of complaint.
Right.
Yeah, I, I.
Probably even if they address us, we can't respond.
Well, yeah, but I think that the, that the, the public, I mean, if we have that public comment, I think that's been a good process for community people to say whatever they think. We don't have to be in agreement with it, but it's their right to say what they need to say, and we can't respond to it, but at least they get that opportunity to voice whatever they need to voice, as long as it's within the realms of what the, the policy is and what they can say and what they can't say, I mean.
And, and I guess, um, one thing I've often felt sitting over here is it's, I, I, I am vocal when I see a legal concern, when I see the potential that someone is making a statement at the podium at either our bequest or that we're allowing them to do so that could potentially defend another individual or employee or violate confidentiality of a student. Um, but that's a legal, I, I'm jumping and speaking when I see a legal vulnerability. You may have a much higher threshold just from a policy perspective as far as what you want to hear and how you want your DGVA local and your FNG interpreted, because those are your complaint policies. And just like Reverend Urban said, as long as you have those complaint policies, you don't even have to have public forum. Public forum is supposed to, to be, those that have public forum is to supplement your complaint policy. So, when they come to the podium, they should never be complaining about a teacher or an employee or a decision, or, you know, it could be a vendor that could come to the podium, and you have complaint policies for vendors as well. So, it's supposed to supplement your complaint policies where they're bringing information to your attention that, um, you may, may not otherwise know, or, you know, actually bragging, you know, about something that they saw or did, um, and wanted you to be aware of. And so, um, you just, I just kind of want to make sure you're aware that just because I'm not screaming or jumping out of my seat doesn't mean that you can't require less at your podium. You can, you're interpreting your complaint policies, and by shutting a speaker down, your board president can do that, or any one of you can do that, if you feel like they've, um, that it's really a complaint or a criticism that needs to go through your agreements, your policy.
Well, most of, most of the comments from the podium are criticisms, for the large part.
Well, I mean, I've heard some comments, some pretty nice comments about programs that's tough that we've had, you know, that's something that the school is doing good in programs or teachers.
I said most.
I mean, I, I think it just allows the, the public to, to make those kind of comments, and I, and you know, if it's a complaint or if it's a criticism, well, you know, i- if the shoe fits, wear it, if it doesn't, then we don't need to worry about it, that's the way I look at it, I mean, that's just, that's just where I'm coming from, because.
Well, that's the problem, you don't know anything about the shoe or the size of it until it starts talking at the podium, it's really not fair to the administration and the complaint process.
Okay.
Unless, and so, if you want to have a healthy balance and allow the public to speak and speak their mind and good, bad, or indifferent, if it's going to be something critical that's not positive, there should be some sort of reasonable procedure for the administration to be able to get that, evaluate it, be able to respond to it, or go through the procedures, it may get handled outside of here and not be made a huge issue and not get resolved with the person that has it.
And that's why I was saying, the time before, just signing up right before the meeting, then we don't know that, okay? But if they have some, for, some time back, that's what I'm saying, like, the day of the meeting that by twelve o'clock noon or something like that, where you have an idea of what's going to be made comments about, then they can deal with that.
Sure.
But I think right before the meeting, signing up, then that's probably, we don't know what's going to happen when they sign up, so.
Mr. Russell, if, if the criticism sometime is valid, it gives us an opportunity to work on it, and if it's not valid, just we heard it, and they express themselves, and God bless.
You get that opportunity anyway, if the proper procedures are followed, because it's reported up the channels, just like you'll see when, if board members are approached with certain complaints,
Right.
how you're supposed to channel them and where they go, there's, there's procedures for those to be handled and dealt with,
Right.
and I would suggest and say, if somebody in the public follows the proper procedures and channels, and they feel like they're dissatisfied with the result and the answer, then I, I could, I could see that might become an issue that may, needs to come before and debated in public and try to get to the bottom of it, if it truly wasn't satisfied and they still feel aggrieved of some sort, and they followed their procedures, but I just think you need to have a fair, reasonable balance as to, as to what you're allowing go through those channels and what, who and what you're allowing to respond.
I think.
And it sounds like other, it sounds like this is not unusual with the.
Well, other school boards are doing it, they're pulling public comment from the.
So, it's not turning off the negative comments, or I think it's just that if they're, if they've signed up ahead of time when they turn up, if we get the information and I don't even know about it, and it was a time of, I, I mean, I can't answer and address the fact, because I don't even know about it, but if we got the information early enough, and I can get the facts, I could even respond to that individual, and they, you know, it may satisfy or not, but, uh, but at least I've got a chance to gather information and give them facts, and, and even at the night, that night, if they still haven't spoken, I've got facts to give y'all, because you were saying, I can answer with facts, and so.
Why don't we, why don't we?
It, it, it seems very, to me, when I hear things like that, that you're very much trying to, um, discourage public discourse. Um, and I for one, I think it's valuable for people to have a avenue, uh, just as Mr. Montoya and, and Mr. Nuremont have said, to express their opinion, I mean, I think that's a basic tenet that our country was founded on, you know, freedom of speech. We don't always have to agree, and I, even on this board, I mean, we're all friends, but we don't always agree on every item.
Right.
But we don't, uh, we don't disrespect each other for that, we can, we move forward in respect that we have differences of opinion. I think the same is true for the people who come forward, and, and maybe they're critical of a decision this board has made, I think we should offer them that same respect, we, we can't expect that a hundred percent of the folks in the community are going to agree with every decision, but we do, uh, owe them the respect to listen to their perspective, in my opinion.
Ms. Bitch, if I ask you a question, I expect an answer. If they ask us a question, we can't answer. If they, whatever they say to us, it's, we just have to be known.
We cannot, we, we cannot. We can answer in public meeting, it does not mean that that, that that issue is not investigated or looked at after the meeting,
But they are addressing the board.
or that Ms. Doughty doesn't follow up and look into those issues, which she often does, and often comes back and, and updates us on.
But if there's been misinformation, that misinformation can take on a life of its own before any of that occurred, and as we know with the internet and everything else, I mean, I've had people call me and say, I can't believe they're going to do this, either the school's going to do this in this location, and I've got it from good sources, and it turns out there was never anything like that contemplated, somebody started somewhere, they put it on the internet, and it went around, and all of a sudden it became the norm, people are talking about this.
You're never going to discontinue rumors.
Yeah, so the same thing can happen, so why there should be some reasonable way for people to look at and address it, and you're not squelching them from the process.
Right.
You're just, you're, in all fairness, being able to respond and address the concern.
And we can respond on a factual or policy basis, so if the factual information is incorrect, we can respond according to our attorney.
If, if it's something that the information that they have, that they were able to go and get and determine that is going to be factually incorrect, but many times it's not the case, so.
What, what if we get, as Todd said, that public information needed, that we signed them up electronically twenty, and they had to sign up twenty-four hours ahead of the meeting?
Maybe some people have no access to electronic, Mr. Green, there are some people who, they don't, they get off work, come here. The existing situation, the exist.
They can, they can come up here and sign up.
Well, the existing situation that we have, Mr. Green, I know Reverend Urban read exactly those statements. You got three minutes, you cannot mention people's name, face the, the podium, you mentioned all those. And as far as questioning, I never heard anybody question, they expressed themselves and walked out.
Well, there have been, we have received questions, but we just couldn't respond.
That, I, okay, we may interpret those as a question, but what I heard, every time I was here, is they expressed themselves, this is what I say, and walked out.
No, a lot of times it's rhetorical, just like, you know, I mean, it may not be a question like they're saying, I want you to respond right now, especially when they've announced that you can't respond,
Right.
but it may be very critical and rhetorical of the administration, you know, and there's specific examples, why don't you do this? You know, it's rhetorical, because they're trying to say, my opinion is something you've done like this, I think y'all should pay attention to it.
Well, let's be honest, we are pretty much immune to their response, because after they express themselves, walk out, we never discuss any part of it anyways, and that's as honest as I can be.
That's right, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, so let them, so let them do it.
And we all.
That's true.
Well.
Let's move on, guys, go ahead.
The only reason I said twenty-four hours is to give you a chance to research whatever they're complaining about, and give you some time to do it,
I mean, I would.
you might even resolve the issue before it ever comes to the, to the board.
I mean, I would love to know topics, if I, because if it's something that's critical, I need to have some information to give y'all. So, like what you were talking about FOSH, like, we don't discuss it because it isn't on the agenda, but I try to get back to y'all, because if, if, if there's a, through the emails or whatever, because if there's some topic that comes up that's all of a sudden I've not even heard of, I try to research it out to give you the information. The, the part that I don't give is that, uh, to the public that hears it, that, that's where I don't, I'm not able to come back and respond to.
Right.
And so, they hear, that's the only part that I, I believe, and the openness and the whole bit.
Right.
What I watch though is when people come in to say, see their kids perform, and so, we have the public comment, and they don't come very often, they just come to watch their kids perform, so they hear the whatever topic, and they go. So they hear the whatever topic and they go away immediately when their kids leave. And they're like, wow, did, I mean, is that true? You know, and so forth. Because I'm not able to reach all those people that heard that and give them an answer. That's my only...
But we can put public comment wherever we want to on the agenda, right?
Yeah, you can put it anywhere you want.
Okay, so we, it'd be all right to move it, right? You wouldn't have a problem with that, would you?
I, I do because some people have family. They have to go take care of their children. They can't sit here all day, all night until we get ready for them to listen to them. They have family, they have children, they're ta- they're taxpayers, they have concerns, uh...
So do we. All right, my family.
We volunteer.
I'm ready to go now.
We volunteer to sit here and listen to them.
I think last time we moved it right after...
Sammy is tired. She had worked on that.
Well, that goes with her territory.
Because we were in the quandary with that, when we had the people come perform or do whatever.
We can move it to after that.
We don't want them to stand after two forever while we go for everything else. So we moved it this last time right after performances.
We'll look at it.
Was the administration gonna come up with some additional recommendations for this section?
Yeah.
I, I just noted that I thought we need to add something more definitive about, we needed to add something about personnel because there's no reference at all that yet you say it at the beginning and so it needs to come from somewhere. And so I added that and then I just noted, you know, just to ma- you know, make some kind of, just repeat exactly what you said.
And d- d- don't take me wrong, I, I'm affirming, we should not mention anybody's name or address it in such a way that it's, without saying the name, you know who they're talking. I, I'm firm.
How you gonna tell the public that, though?
Yeah.
When, when they get in front of that mic, there's no controlling them. It's it.
I had another concern on item F. It wasn't redlined, but it was, um, lined out. Uh, the last part of that sentence, it says unless requested by the presiding officer. And this basically is the, the one area where it says that the presiding officer can ask or can maybe ask a question of somebody that's here in the audience. Maybe we wanna hear from, you know, uh, the athletic director or something like that. So I didn't quite know why that was scratched out and, and I'm a little uncomfortable with saying that we can't call on anybody from the audience. Because we may have a question.
Well, you're supposed to be responding, and again, this is in public comment. This isn't on an agenda item.
Okay.
So I, I completely agree on agenda items. You should have a call any of these.
Ask your principal, hey, how's that going?
It's just very...
It's like I said, when you're not addressing the board or if you're allowing somebody to start turning around and asking somebody, that's when you lose control of the board.
We don't wanna get into that.
This actually had all other times during the meeting, so it's not strictly to...
That's correct. The wording...
And I think that impacts the ability to ask a principal or somebody in the audience, how's this work?
Well, that's my point is I wanna be able to have...
That's, that's just a definite, that's the word.
And that's normally the phrase that usually they're...
That's the word, audience. The intention of the word, audience in the policy is not, is not...
Not administration, staff.
Right.
So I think that needs clear...
Can you, can you look at something?
In other words, can you, can you think of a scenario where you could ask?
Can we just, well, I don't know. Can we just scratch that whole, I mean, why do we need it then? Can we just scratch that whole F completely out?
It's, it's probably...
It seems superfluous.
But I love that it's probably in your policy. You don't have to have it in procedures.
Kelly, could we go back to E just for a minute and just, you know, with our discussion, is it possible to do a little research to see what other districts are they handling it so it can be more fluent, more...
Red one, E?
Yes.
A- about...
About the...
About what you can respond and how and do and under what guise is... Because the way it's read right now, it's almost as if what's announced in meetings, you only respond by referring it to policy, but then you've been kind of told behind the scenes that, you know, or that, you know, you can factually try to correct factual, but there's nothing here about that, uh, in detail.
I think it, it all goes back on just the definition of deliberation under the Open Meetings Act because the intent here is that you can't deliberate on something that's not on the agenda. And so if someone's just coming to the podium and talking about, you know, a random program or something that's not on your agenda, then you can't by Q and A with them, that creates deliberation because you've got a forum up here and you're asking a question of a third party and that's how the AG determines that you're now deliberating. So you're only supposed to just spew factual information or turn to your administration to deliver the factual information or refer them to the appropriate policy, but any kind of Q and A would equal a deliberation.
Yes, okay.
So no Q and A is the easy part.
Right. Not with, right, not with the person at the podium.
And then, as in other contexts, I know with newspapers and things, and I know we recently had a situation. I don't know that it's a wise idea to let someone get up and read something anonymous from someone else. I mean, that's got all kinds of fraught with dangers in it, you know? Newspapers flip back and forth, but we used to have a deal with the paper here had the anonymous stuff. And then they stopped that by saying, if you weren't willing to sign your name on it, we shouldn't publish it, type of deal. It, it's got the potential for abuse. And I'm not saying that situation was that at all. I'm just saying in general, I think the norm these days is you don't let folks just get up and public these types of things and quote what they're calling an anonymous source. So I just put that out for your consideration.
I agree with that. The bad thing is with Open Meetings Act, we're going by what it says we have to do if we allow public comment. They could literally get up and sing a song. As long as they're not talking about something illegal or inappropriate that we, that can't be addressed, they can do whatever they want for three minutes. Uh, now, if they break some of the laws, like they say, well, principal so-and-so did this to my kid or this teacher, you know, then you cut them off, say, I'm sorry, you're done. Time's up. Uh, but other than that, once we open up to three minutes, they've got three minutes to say...
In all honesty, you've had folks stand up there that's had active litigation against the school district and let them profess about the, their cases in, in, in that, in open session. That, how's that possible?
I'm, I'm just saying, if they're not breaking some law about what the definition of, you know, implicating the personnel, but personnel decisions, things like that, they can kinda say what they want. And I'm afraid if you said, well, we're gonna give that information early and we'll decide whether you get to come up and talk or not, or we get more information about it. It's kinda the, being up there or being down here, when somebody gets up there, you, you're just gonna get ready. Very rarely if someone can get up and say, hey, y'all are doing a great job. I appreciate all y'all are doing. That's once in a blue moon. Unless you're paying them to do it, they're gonna come say, they're gonna come up and rap about everything under the sun. And maybe something you handle, maybe something you doesn't need to be handled, but you can't hardly control it. Once we've opened up, is that not, Kelly, and if you open it up, they pretty much...
Yeah, you're definitely creating a forum. I mean, you know, it just all goes back to what the intention and the purpose of it is. And the concept of having an early sign up is, is, uh, directly in line with wanting to resolve what issue of concern the person has at the podium. And the more you know ahead of time what the issue of concern is, the more readily you'll be able to resolve it by providing that factual information or whatever kind of, um, information back to them. That's the, the only intent or, or reason for requiring an earlier sign up is so that hopefully if they do have inaccurate information or have a question to your administration because they knew or were prepared that they were going to raise that issue tonight, could resolve it and get them that information right then and there.
I will tell you, we have had parents, uh, that they call polling, and they will ask questions about like, uh, as soon as they, like, we've heard a rumor, whatever, and we can correct that beforehand. And they're like, they're like, is this gonna be on the agenda? We don't, no, it's not, you know, that type of thing. So we can correct those ahead of time. We've done that.
I think it's the consensus, pretty much, that everybody wanna kind of keep it a part of our procedure or policy. Um, so, are there any other concerns?
We just follow...
I, I, I think, I think, um, looking at, you might wanna just research what he said.
I think that was, uh, if somebody's got legal, uh, litigation going against the district, I think that might be something to consider in our policy that says that...
I don't think you need it in your policy. I think...
Huh?
I think I'd like to just see something more specific proposed by the administration that addresses some of the issues that, that we've been having to deal with and what's fair and reasonable so that you're letting people say what they wanna say, but you're also giving the administration a, a fair chance with some early, ear- earlier notice to some extent that they can actually maybe answer some of the questions and, uh, take care of some of the issues.
Administration.
If, if it's, if it involves administration, and then, and then secondly, I think you need a little more detail as to the, the, the specific response, you know, that, uh, that people can respond to correct board members or president or...
In other words...
Can respond to corrected...
In other words, let me find some more specifics so that you guys understand what your parameters are in response.
Yeah, it seems kinda loosey-goosey right now and it's, uh...
So they won't wanna pull it off the agenda until it's revised?
No.
And I keep leaving on there?
Is, those people who sign up to speak, do they put their full name and phone number?
I don't think they put their phone number.
It's good to put phone number and address so they can contact...
I know they put their address. I don't know about phone number. Do they put their phone number on there?
They're not always completely filled in. We can, I can revise the form to make sure they have their phone number.
One list always got, she does, it has their name and what the top...
All right, so we can come back with that at the next meeting when the board brings that. Legal and local voting. Robber schools of war.
Before you get off that, we might wanna make an, an, an action item at some point in time to relook at that public comment and then give you the free, the freedom to make the procedures match our policy. That's all.
Because, Daddy, we wanna close at eight o'clock.
Okay.
So...
I'll go hurry and hurry.
So I was, what I was gonna ask, I think they've read through it and maybe they can identify the ones they wanna discuss.
Sure.
And that might save some time.
I, I'll stop being a teacher.
No, because I know that they have, many of them have taken their notes and they have the ones they wanna discuss.
Okay. Gotcha.
Let me, Mr. Coach Fosh?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I didn't ask. I, I, I didn't say anything.
Well, I saw your notes.
He's asking if you have some...
Oh.
If you had something you wanna discuss.
I'm, I'm, I'm reading mine to see.
Okay.
Some of it been, uh, there was a question one time, is, I guess, a statement, uh, board member, there has to be two or more board members to ask for executive meeting. Could be one. Was this a state law or...
Executive session?
Yes.
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
Or, or, or reconvene another...
No, not just one.
Just, it has to be more than one.
It has to be more than one.
Okay.
Which gives, I guess, credence to the, to the reason or the cause.
Right. The, the reason I'm asking, in case there's a situation, I don't wanna share it with someone else would be violating the law. Okay.
I will say that I, I was guilty and every, I think every board president's been guilty of B. We always start the discussion before we have a, a motion and say...
That's easy to correct. Uh, I had an issue on four F. When a board member wishes to meet formally with any other district employee, the board member will inform the superintendent and call. And so, you know, formally is not really defined. And I think of a situation that's come up in the past where I would hate to see the administration or anyone try to throw something like this in my face if a teacher comes to me to complain and make a complaint and argue about what's formal versus what's informal. And, and in fact, in the past, not this administration, but I had an administration tell me that I was not allowed to listen to teacher complaints, which I disagree with. And so I would like this to be clarified and cleaned up to the extent, uh, whether you're gonna define formally or informally. I mean, I, I guess what this is meant to cover is if, is if a board member had some school district issue that was burning with that board member, they really wanted to meet with someone under you, it needs to go through you. It's business type. So I don't, I'm not sure what it means because we're not really supposed to be getting into the details. So Kelly, what's the purpose of F?
I don't know. We're looking for right now to see where it is in your policy. If it's all under the policy title, it's a board member's...
Yeah.
And so it's supposed to be a limitation on your...
This was already in y'all's policy.
So it's... I think the, when the board member wishes, that would be the board's initiative, initiation of the action. So if someone else initiated the action, that may not be there because of the term wishes.
Well, if someone calls me up and says, I teach over here and I'm very upset, I don't feel I can go to my principal or Shandit Doughty, can I come to your office? Is that formal or informal? And if I say, sure, I got to hear it, and I'm wishing, wishing to meet with them, right? You see what I'm saying? So...
Now, they're, 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 they're asking for the meeting still.
I think this just was language within your existing, um, operating procedures because I'm not finding it in your policy.
When a board member wishes to meet formally...
Can we just scratch it?
Yeah, I don't like it.
Yeah, I don't like it either.
Scratch all of that. Scratch it all together.
Yes.
Yep.
F.
Um, board members, I would, I would like to, um, maybe it's in the form of a motion that we, uh, continue this discussion at another, another meeting in light that we've been going on about three hours now and we still have some business on the agenda to go. No, it's okay. I would rather, I'd rather have another meeting and be fresh. And I don't wanna rush this process because this is a very important process. But maybe we could table this at page eight and continue and ask the superintendent, ask the superintendent to go ahead and schedule a, another, uh, special meeting to continue this at a later date.
And, and the constraints, because it's gonna fall right into...
Is it, the constraints are in here?
The, the, I'll, I'll make a motion on that when we get to it.
Okay, all right. Because y'all know I can go on that.
I know. So there's a motion.
Sammy is so tired.
Why am I so tired? So there's a motion.
This is not y'all's life.
It's not...
We have a motion on the floor, the second. Uh, could you repeat that motion again?
That we, in light of the fact that we're, uh, nearing our third hour and we get, we need to be fresh because this is important work that we are doing, that, uh, we table this, the remainder of this from page eight forward and ask the superintendent to schedule another special meeting in the, within the next two weeks. I don't know.
Well, you buy it for the first, it, it's holiday.
In, in the near future, okay.
Yeah.
There's that.
If I'm near.
It is motion by Ms. Fitch and second by Mr. Neal. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, it will also include the board constraints, right?
We're gonna stop at page eight and go for... All of it is after page eight. Is that right?
I got your text eleven thirty-six PM.
That'll be the next, that'll be the next item. We'll have to...
Is that what I...
I missed him that, didn't I? I gotta be in that for him.
So we're on B right now.
Right.
Is it possible to email it rather than text?
Yes, there is.
Please.
I'm crazy about that text.
I know you are.
All right.
I can't get it, get it right now, popping up, going back again.
We have a, um, a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote?
I just wanted to make a request because the administration is gonna send us an updated version before we meet next time with corrections to this point? Okay, great.
All right. All those in favor?
Now, what are we voting on?
To dismiss the meeting. All right. Any opposed to the unanimous? All right, we have another agenda.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we table item C, consideration of board action on superintendent and board constraint progress measures till our next special meeting.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion by Ms. Fitch, second by Mr. Montoya, that we table item C to the next meeting. Any discussion? Those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Any other motions?
We have item D here. What page is that?
What page?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, yes, I think. Okay, so...
Now, we need to deal with E.
Mr. Martin, are we simply, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
Go ahead.
Mr. Martin, are we simply adding this, uh, person to, as a T test appraiser? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the teacher evaluation and support system appraiser as recommended by the administration.
Second. Second.
Motion moved and second. Any discussion? And you can find it on page thirty-six of the book. And that's Lola Moore, Emmeline Carpenter. All right, no discussion. All in favor? All, vote is unanimous. Thank you. All right, uh, rescheduling our, um, December board meeting and January.
Oh, we're recommending Tuesday, the nineteenth for December. To be our regular board meeting for December. We, y'all were thinking, when we were back there last time, everybody thought it was gonna be on fourteenth.
Nineteenth.
Because this year, we don't get out till the twenty-second. Y'all are used to us getting out like that week and I am too of the fifth, of the, uh, eleventh. But we actually go to the twenty-second because it's just the way the calendar is. And so we've got that other week, so we were saying the nineteenth.
Okay, nineteen for me.
Okay, January recommendation?
Uh, the January recommendation was, uh...
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, yes. Because we don't come back until the eighth from vacation and we gotta have time to get that agenda out to y'all.
So board members hope until the ninth...
To the nineteenth.
The nineteenth and the twenty-fifth.
The nineteenth of December and the twenty-fifth of December.
January.
Twenty eighteen. Okay.
Because of the way the holidays.
I would make a motion that we reschedule the December regular board meeting to December the nineteenth, twenty seventeen, and a January regular board meeting to January the twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen.
I second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Ready to vote. Those in favor? And so it's ordered. So, uh, it's ordered. All right, um, Holly, we'll, I guess we'll, we'll converge to C on all, and to reschedule for this. We'll probably need to wait till after the holidays. Yes, ma'am. All right. Any other motion? So, Doc, thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.